Good morning, everybody. Let's call the meeting to order. We've got a lot of celebrating to do today and a lot of serious business. Meredith, would you call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
Here.
Holly Bloodworth.
Here.
Jamie Bowling. Patrice McCreary.
Here.
Julie Pyle.
Here.
Randy Poe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Diane Woods.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Alyssa Riley.
Here.
Secretary Link.
Jamie Link attending virtually.
Appreciate your being here and all of you. I hope you had a restful evening. We're going to start by recognizing some of the good news that is out there within our state. And I'll begin with Diane Woods and ask her to share some good news.
Thank you, Chair Robinson, and thanks for the opportunity to share the good news about a lady who has been serving meals and smiles at an elementary school in Fayette County for a long, long time. Mrs. Ruby Alnut has been serving meals and smiles to students at Stonewall Elementary School in Fayette County for 58 years, to be exact. Mrs. Alnut was celebrated as a school lunch hero on School Lunch Hero Day on May 3rd of this year. School Lunch Hero Day was designated by the School Nutrition Association as an opportunity for parents, students, school staff, and communities to thank those who provide healthy meals to nearly 30 million of America's students each school day. The day has been celebrated annually since 2013. Mrs. Alnut began her career as a cafeteria worker in 1966 when her son was attending Stonewall Elementary School. Throughout the years, she has seen many changes, such as being required to wear dresses and making lunches from scratch. She said she loved baking peanut butter cookies. We can all go over and get us some cookies. Although students are her main reason to continue in her career, she said that the staff and colleagues at Stonewall Elementary have a special place in her heart. Mrs. Alnut said she continues to work because she loves being around people and especially children. Not surprising, she says, she loves all kids because they make her small. And she does not plan to retire anytime soon. And hopes to continue to serve hot lunches and her special smiles at Stonewall Elementary for many years to come. Congratulations and best wishes, Ms. Ruby. You are definitely the Stonewall Elementary School Lunch Hero and mine also.
So Lou, could you...
I think it was me or Jamie? Okay, sure, sure.
Five Kentucky students who were named U.S. Presidential Scholars.
Yes, I love these awards. Again, this year, we've had some Kentucky students among 161 high school seniors named to the U.S. Presidential Scholars Class of 2024. This award comes for their accomplishments in the academics, the arts, and career in technical education fields. The Kentucky student winners are Owen Matthew Borden, Highlands High School in the Fort Thomas Independent School District; Jennifer Mee Nguyen, the Craft Academy for Excellence in Science and Mathematics at Morehead State University; Joshua Zizak, Beechwood High School in the Beechwood Independent School District; Chase R. Phillips, DuPont Manual High School in Jefferson County; and Sarah Elise Colley, Murray High School, Holly, in the Murray Independent School District. The award was established in 1964, and the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program since that time has honored over 8,200 of the nation's top-performing students. So it's wonderful always to have some Kentucky students on that list. Congratulations to our five 2024 winners from Kentucky.
So the Shelby County Public Schools has a teacher named Kentucky's Robotics Coach of the Year. Joanne, tell us about it.
Laura Smith, an engineering teacher for Shelby County Public Schools, has been named Kentucky's VEX Coach of the Year. VEX is a robotic competition created by the Robotics Education and Competition Foundation, an organization whose mission is to increase student involvement in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics with hands-on robotic engineering programs. Since taking the coaching position in 2016, Smith said she has seen her students grow within the industry and the program. She says her students have made a name for themselves in robotics. Not only does she encourage her students to excel in their program, but she also supports other women to explore the world of robotics and take these steps to become a coach. Smith also encourages more public schools and their students to join in on the exploration of robotics. And I got to see this competition, one of these competitions, last year. Wow, it is amazing.
And Samsung is sponsoring a competition in STEM, Solve for Tomorrow. And we have a state finalist. Dr. Todd, tell us about that.
Sure thing. This Samsung Solve for Tomorrow using STEM technology is a nationwide competition designed to empower students in 6th through 12th grades to leverage the power of STEM to create innovative solutions addressing critical issues in their local communities. A group of three students from Elkhorn Crossing School in Scott County developed fidget button jewelry. That creation would help students relieve their anxiety. We've asked for samples, they haven't come in yet. The competition is among 300 teams from public middle and high schools, and finalists are required to submit a detailed lesson plan outlining how students would use STEM to address some important issues. The Elkhorn Crossing Group was made up of Kate Schindler, Jaka Justice, and Sophie Risher, and they were selected as the Kentucky winner out of the 300. So congratulations to these three from Elkhorn Crossing, and we're waiting for samples. Thank you.
It's so impressive that we had a good number of competitors in that. That's really impressive.
It's interesting to see the ideas that the others had as well.
And alleviating anxiety is something that ought to be a big seller. We also have an honorary for the Logan Award from KSB Founder's Day. Patrice, tell us about that.
And this is a special honor to share because, of course, we are the board for the Kentucky School for the Blind. Today, we're highlighting Renee Farrell. She's a former Certified Orientation and Mobility Specialist for the Kentucky School for the Blind, and she is this year's recipient of the Paul J. Langen Award. This award was presented during the KSB Founder's Day celebration on May 9. The Paul J. Langen Award is named after the man who served as KSB Superintendent from 1945 until 1956. Now, that one was before I was born. In recognition of his outstanding service and constructive leadership, Langen's innovative approach to education established the foundation for continued improvement of the education of blind and visually impaired children at the school. This award is presented to individuals, and this is our Renee that we're talking about here because she built this bill. This award is presented to individuals who have given their time and efforts over a long period of time to support and interact with KSB, people who are blind and visually impaired, and the blindness community. The Paul J. Langen Award is intended to be a high honor to those who receive it and as recognition of Langen's legacy of character and service. So congratulations to Renee Farrell.
Absolutely. Alyssa, Special Education Excellence. Tell us about the good news.
This was exciting to read about. So the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Special Education Programs, or OSUP, diligently oversees IDEA Part C and B Special Education Programs nationwide through the Differentiated Monitoring and Support 2.0 System, or DMS 2.0. Recently, the Office of Special Education and Early Learning has undergone an exhaustive and multi-year OSUP audit under this DMS 2.0 framework. We are proud to announce that Kentucky stands alone as the first state to exit the DMS 2.0 audit process with flying colors. The final report reveals an extraordinary achievement. A mere technicality on a financial form was swiftly addressed and marked the only finding with no corrective action plan needed. So this historic accomplishment underscores Kentucky's unwavering commitment to ensuring the highest standards of education for all students, particularly those with special needs.
Thank you so much. So. It's good to start off with good news. We have further news, and it's joyful to share in one respect only. During this time on the board agenda, we include an item under which board members may raise issues, not included on the agenda for purposes of... for issues not included on the agenda that they wish to be further explored or refer to a committee or scheduling issues for future board review or whatever is on their mind. So to begin today, I am obliged to recognize board colleagues who have announced that they are not seeking reappointment to KBE. We would like to invite Patrice, Joanne, and Jamie, though Jamie's having technology issues, and we're not sure that she'll be able to join us. But if she's able to join, we'll recognize her when that occurs. But meanwhile, I want to invite Patrice and Joanne to share their reflections on their board service and to let us know what future ventures and amazing acts of citizenship are in the offing, because these two don't quit. That we know. And we're going to take this opportunity also to acknowledge and express our appreciation for your amazing service and fellowship during these times that we have experienced the work of being members of KBE. I mean, this is ultimate citizenship. So who's going first?
Well, the bad news is when I sat down to write something out, I did free writing, like the one thing I could always get my eighth graders to do, and I wound up with eight pages. The news is I have that big, scrawling 1960s cursive writing. And then when I did type it out to print it, it was just a little over two pages. You can rest at ease.
I'm going to be able to say ditto.
Well, when Lieutenant Governor Coleman contacted me about a possible appointment to this Kentucky Board of Education, I was naturally in the middle of a 5th District Retired Teacher Meeting. And I stepped out in the hall, and I considered her proposal for about a second before I said yes. And when I got home, though, I took a breath and I thought, what have I done? This is going to involve long meetings, policy discussions, and many hard decisions, all those things that plagued me as a teacher. But what's an old retired teacher to do but buckle up and drive on? Then, at our first board meeting, maybe our second one, we were introduced to all those CTE President kids who came and told us about their different clubs. And I thought, here's my why. The meetings, policy, and decisions are the necessary what, but our precious students, they'll always be the why. So yes, these meetings have been long, but with Dr. Young and Dr. Robinson carrying on, we get through with lots of good humor and lots of compassion. But the policy discussions, sorry, KDE folks, they still make me dizzy. They do an excellent job of making everything so understandable and so concise, maybe. And we make tough decisions, but they're for the students, and it's worth it. And I'm so very proud of all the hard work this board has done, in particular, naming two excellent commissioners, developing the Kentucky United We Learn Council, and navigating the uncertainty of COVID. I'm honored to have worked beside each of you and to make certain Kentucky students get the education that they deserve. Patrice, you've been my confidant and sounding board ever since inauguration day, when they made the announcements and we found each other and all those people. And Lou, you have a gift of making everyone feel like they've been your friend for years, and I'm convinced you know every educator in Kentucky. And if not, they know you. Sharon, your enthusiasm and life experience are just truly inspirational. And thank goodness, you are that self-described policy wonk. So I depend on you for that. And Randy and Steve, I have had my hands full with you two. But every meeting, I have thought to myself, these two guys are shining examples of what a superintendent can be. And Holly, I just love your dedication to your student teachers, and I just think what a great role model they have. And so I've loved getting to know you and also our discussions about theater. Julie, if only every parent in Kentucky were as devoted to education as you are. Just think what our state could accomplish. And Lee, I'm convinced that you have a story, a life experience, or a joke for every situation. And after every meeting, my husband always asks, well, tell me what Dr. Todd told us. And Diane, after your appointment, my former superintendent, Tim Abrams, called me, and he said, Joanne, you are going to like Diane. She's fair, honest, and no-nonsense. And he was right.
Dr. Poe, you heard that, didn't you?
And Jamie, I don't think she's with us, but I know it's been very emotional for her to step into this role and after Mike's passing, but she's done so with such grace and dignity. And speaking of Mike, I just want to mention Mike and Coach Johnson. You know, they were just such dedicated men and so lovely. I was so glad to have gotten to know them. And Robin, you have been a steady hand in your term as interim commissioner, and thank you so much for stepping up to that challenge. Meredith, I secretly think of you as Wonder Woman. And Todd, you are Superman. You are truly superheroes, and we couldn't do it without you, that is for sure. That table in the back, you are full of guardian angels, Talia and Megan and Logan. You just keep us moving right along. Taylor and Stacy, I'm just, you've taken care of me. You know what you've done. Thanks so much. And Dr. Thompson and Secretary Link, thank you for putting public education in the big picture for us. Alyssa, if only every child could have a teacher like you. Your insights have been so valuable to the board, and you, Allison, and Joanna have been trailblazers as teacher representatives on this board. So I'm sure none of you are going to be offended when I tell you who my favorite members of the board are, and that would be RJ, Jude, and Soliana. Wow, they just stole my heart, and they're such beautiful examples of Kentucky students. So in conclusion, the most striking characteristic of this entire board is hope. You never lose hope. You have big dreams for education, and you have the vision and determination to make these hopes come true. Now, in true language arts teacher fashion, I have a poem for that. One of my all-time favorite poems, "Hope" by Emily Dickinson. "Hope is a thing with feathers that perches in the soul and sings the tune without the words and never stops at all. And sweetest in the gale is heard and sore must be the storm that could have brash that little bird that kept so many warm. I've heard it in the chillest land and on the strangest sea, yet never in extremity it asked a crumb of me." So hang on to hope. Hope of a Kentucky where every child is an eager learner with a world-class teacher who's supported and respected. And I know that hope is alive and well in each of you. I'll miss you. I'll miss our meetings and the good work we do, but I'll continue volunteering at Henry County Schools and keep that hope parched in myself. And I have a copy of that poem for us. Love it.
Patrice?
Ditto.
I have to follow that. I do have my insurance, my tissues. I started writing mine out at least three, four times, and deleted, and deleted, and deleted. So I wanted to speak from the heart for just a moment. I've reflected a lot over the first call. Are you interested in doing this? And I had to keep myself from yelling, yes, I'm interested in this. I too said yes, and then as soon as I closed the call out, I thought, what have I gotten myself into? And the first day that we walked in here, and I was sitting right up there, I think pretty basically around where you are, Lou, now, or maybe Randy, and David, Karen was sitting right there beside me. And the cameras were in here, the reporters were in here, the room was full. And once again, I thought, what have I gotten myself into? But things started to flow. One of my favorite questions I received from that day is, there is a picture somewhere of David and I leaned into each other, and we're talking about something. And I had a text from a fairly high-level individual in the state saying, Patrice, I would love to know what you all were talking about. And I said, I was telling him how to put his phone on silent. So the ones that are gone already, for whatever reason, they are no longer on the board, I do have warm, warm memories of that initial group because we entered trial by fire into this situation. And by the end of that first board meeting, when we started over on this side, I think maybe with Holly, or over around on this side, and we went around the table, and every individual sitting at this table shared their story, shared their why, shared their hearts. I knew we were, I knew first and foremost I was in the presence of greatness. This table housed some of the best and brightest minds of the Commonwealth. And again, I thought, what in the world am I doing here? This kindergarten teacher surrounded by this greatness. But everybody stood by me and said, come on, join this group. And I so appreciated that and made me feel right at home in the same group of greatness. And as we've evolved, more greatness has stepped in. And when I travel anywhere in Kentucky or outside of Kentucky, I brag about you all. I am like a proud mama. And I tell people about how our board is made up and the love this board has, number one and foremost, for the children of the Commonwealth and the hands that they are being held in, and that everything that oozes through this board is through the sieve of what is best for the kids of the Commonwealth. I could not be more proud of a group than these individuals that sit in these chairs around this table. Saying yes was exactly what I told Alyssa that she mentioned yesterday. It was the pinnacle of my career, and that's what I told the Lieutenant Governor when I joined this group. Yes, it doesn't get any better than this. And that's how I felt about it day in and day out, as I come in and I visit with you all and I hear your wisdom. And when Lou and Sharon have been our great leaders, I've had to look up words in the As we've had leadership at the helm that time and time again, no matter who stepped in, they were the utmost quality, and they led our state of education, this wonderful, wonderful team that always comes in and has a seat in here and shines. You all have led them with such amazing confidence and grace and dignity and knowledge that I've always been so proud to say, yes, yes, I'm a part of this. And I would love, I would love to go around and say my tidbits, but I would have to pull my tissue out. So I hope at some point in time, you have known how much I value you, how much, whenever I come to you, you've always had the answers I've needed. You've always had the support I've craved. You've always been the person for me that I needed at the moment. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I was that little kid in elementary school that scooted down behind James Roy Palmer every chance I had because we were alphabetically placed so that nobody would notice me. And if I stayed quiet enough, then everything would be fine. I was that kid in school that we couldn't afford insurance. I was that kid in school that... I was a first-generation college graduate. My, I was the kid that my mother had a stroke when I was 15, and I took over the care of my family. I was the kid that when the guidance counselor came to study hall in my junior year of school and said, I need somebody to help us work in the guidance office during this period, I went. And that was a God thing because that's where I learned how to apply for colleges and how to work through loans and work through all of the paperwork that I did on my own. And I got in. Education, I said on the first day I sat in here, education was that magical yellow road to success for me. And I want with all of my heart for every child in the Commonwealth to be able to say they found their yellow road in the world of education. And with this group being cutting-edge and making the changes, we're on that road. We are on that road, and they are coming right along with us. I see the vision. My favorite musical is Hamilton, and I want to say, I was in the room. I was in the room when I saw the vision. He just played. And I'm going to sit back and watch it happen because you all can make it happen. Thank you. Thank you. I told you, you're with these hairs, right? I do believe Jamie was able to do it.
Oh, Jamie, wonderful, wonderful. We'd love to hear from you.
See her. She's on. There she is. Hello.
Hi, Jamie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am so sorry. I am in California. I had been logged in since 5:30 a.m. and it was working just fine until 6:00, when the meeting started, and then my internet dropped here. We're in the middle of some high winds and I just can't do anything about it except to do this by phone. Can you hear okay?
We can, yeah.
Great. Thank you so much for letting me join in this way. Hopefully, the video, I will be able to join shortly and be back with you. But I do want to say a few words. I sit here today and I'm so touched to be able to express my sincere pleasure and honor and have an opportunity to serve on this Kentucky Board of Education. It's been an immensely rewarding experience and I'm so, so grateful for the trust and confidence you all have placed on me to contribute to the betterment of education in our state. First and foremost, I would like to acknowledge the outstanding service of my fellow board members. I have sat here in tears as Joanne went around the room and spoke to every single one of us, and I'm so touched by Joanne's words and to acknowledge my husband, Mike, and also Patrice, your words really touched my heart. Your dedication, passion, and wavering commitment to the well-being of Kentucky students has been truly inspiring to me. Together, we've worked collaboratively, engaging in constructive discussions and decision-making processes that have had a very positive impact on education across the state. It has been a privilege to serve alongside such a dedicated and talented group of individuals. I would also like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to the Kentucky Department of Education staff members. Your professionalism, expertise, and tireless efforts have been instrumental in supporting the board's work. Your commitment to excellence and your unwavering dedication to the educational needs of our students have been evident in every interaction. I'm grateful for your guidance and the invaluable contributions you've made to our collective efforts. A special thank you to Meredith, who I agree is superwoman, and to Lug and Bell, who seem to be able to get me logged in with a new password every single time. I'm so sorry that it did not work out today, but hopefully I will appear soon. During my tenure, the board has been fortunate to have had the leadership and guidance of Lou Young and Sharon Robertson in board chairs. Lou and Sharon, your commitment to the vision and mission of the board, coupled with your exceptional leadership skills, have been instrumental in driving positive change and progress. I am honored to have worked closely with you and have witnessed firsthand your tireless efforts in advancing the educational landscape of our state. As a member of the board, I've had the privilege of witnessing the monumental impact that the board's collective efforts have had on the lives of students across Kentucky. I'm especially honored that I was able to serve in this way so that our students of Southeast Kentucky had a voice. I'm humbled to have been a part of a board that is dedicated to serving the needs of all students irrespective of their backgrounds or circumstances. The commitment to equity, access, and excellence in education has been at the core of our work, and I am proud to have been a small part of these efforts. In conclusion, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to the Kentucky Board of Education for the invaluable opportunity to serve. It has been an honor to be a small part of a board that is making a significant impact on the lives of all students across the state. I will cherish the experiences and the relationships formed during my tenure and will continue to advocate for the betterment of education in Kentucky. Thank you again for the privilege of serving on this board and for your friendship, which I have valued greatly. Thank you all. You all mean a great deal to me. Thank you.
So, Jamie, we're just thrilled that you were able to join us virtually. And Patrice, Joanne, I want to add another voice to the recognition of your service, that of our governor, Andy Beshear, and cite this acclamation to each of you. To all to whom these presents shall, shall come, whereas the Kentucky Board of Education is committed to improving the future of all Kentuckians by taking an active role in advancing and growing community partnerships, providing leadership that will help give every student equal access to high-quality lifelong learning. And whereas Joanne Adams, Patrice McQuary, Jamie Bowling, there is a section for each of you that I, that is highly, highly personalized. So, I guess I'm going to have to read that section for each of you because this is the governor's recognition of each of you. Whereas Joanne Adams of Pleasville, retired educator with many years of diverse educational experience, was appointed to the Kentucky Board of Education in December 2019, that faithful first meeting. And Adams, a graduate of Washington County High School, who holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a rank-two certification from Eastern Kentucky University, has board experience in all levels of K-12 education and a thorough understanding of the educational needs of our students, families, teachers, and communities served by rural schools. And whereas Adams spent the majority of her teaching career in Henry County Schools, and she, and she taught middle school and social studies and language arts for 15 of her 33 years in education. She previously taught special education at the elementary school level and also worked in the Washington and Shelby County Schools. And whereas Adams served as a member of the school-based Decision-Making Council and worked as a mentor in Kentucky teacher, in the Kentucky Teacher Internship Program, K-TIP, as well as serving in many other leadership roles in teaching. She continues to serve as a mentor in the Henry County Schools. And whereas Adams has demonstrated her commitment to the success of all public schools during her tenure on the State Board of Education. Her term expired in April 2024. Now, therefore, I, Andy Beshear, Governor of the Commonwealth, do hereby pay tribute to Joanne Adams for her service and dedication to the Kentucky Board of Education and students throughout the Commonwealth, done at the Capitol in the city of Frankfurt, the 20th day of May in the year of our Lord 2024 and in the year 232nd year of the Commonwealth. Andy Beshear. Hugs and stuff after I get through all of these. Yeah, right. And this acclamation is for Patrice McQuary. To all to whom these, these presents shall come, whereas the Kentucky Board of Education is committed to improving the future of all Kentuckians by taking an active role in advancing and growing community partnerships and providing leadership that will help give every student equal access to high-quality lifelong learning. And whereas Patrice McQuary of Bowling Green, a retired kindergarten teacher who was named the 2003 Kentucky Teacher of the Year, was appointed to the Kentucky Board of Education in December 2019. And whereas McQuary dedicated much of her term on the Kentucky Board of Education to visit public schools across the Commonwealth with a mission to share good ideas among schools. And McQuary holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Blue Mountain College in Mississippi and a master's degree in education from Western Kentucky University. A national board-certified teacher, she spent the majority of her career in education at Cumberland Trace Elementary School in Warren County before retiring in 2019. In addition to being named Kentucky Teacher of the Year, she was inducted into Kentucky Teacher Hall of Fame in 2008 and into the National Teachers Hall of Fame the following year. And whereas McQuary has advocated for students across the Commonwealth so that every student has the opportunity for a successful future. And whereas McQuary's term on the Board, Kentucky Board of Education ended in April 2024, now I, therefore, Andy Beshear, Governor of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, do hereby pay tribute to Patrice McQuary for her service and dedication to the Kentucky Board of Education and students throughout the Commonwealth, done at the Capitol in the city of Frankfurt, the 20th day of May in the year of our Lord 2024 and in the 232nd year of the Commonwealth. Andy Beshear, Governor. Jamie, the governor has an acclamation to you, which reads, "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas the Kentucky Board of Education is committed to improving the future of all Kentuckians by taking an active role in advancing and growing community partnerships and providing leadership that will help give every student equal access to high-quality lifelong learning." And whereas Jamie Bowling of Middlesbrough spent nearly two decades as a local school board member and served in several other educational roles before being appointed to the Kentucky Board of Education in March of 2021 to serve the remainder of her late husband, Mike Bowling's term. Whereas Bowling has a bachelor's degree in nursing from the University of Kentucky and worked as a neonatal, neonatal intensive care nurse at Children's Hospital in Cincinnati. She then continued her career as neonatal outreach clinician in central Texas. During her stint there, she traveled between 17 Texas communities to perform her duties and also taught advanced care for newborns to personnel at 35 hospitals in the area. And Bowling, whereas Bowling returned to Kentucky in 1985 and stopped working as a nurse, instead immersing herself in her children's education. In 1988, she successfully won a seat on the Middlesbrough Independent Board of Education and was re-elected for 16 years, serving as board chair for 12 of those years. And whereas Bowling was also a board member of the Kentucky School Boards Association and the Kentucky School Curriculum and Assessment and Accountability Council, and she later served as trustee for Pikeville University. And whereas Bowling has advocated for students across the Commonwealth so that every student has the opportunity for a successful future. And whereas Bowling's term on the Kentucky Board of Education ended April 2024, now, therefore, I, Andy Beshear, Governor of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, do hereby pay tribute to Jamie Bowling for her service and dedication to the Kentucky Board of Education and students throughout the Commonwealth, done at the Capitol in the city of Frankfurt on the 20th day of May in the year of our Lord 2024 and in the 232nd year of the Commonwealth. Signed, Andy Beshear, Governor. Jamie, I would love to present this to you along with a real hug, but I, you will be receiving the proclamation and the virtual hugs are in abundance with our sincere thank you.
Thank you so much. That was very thoughtful. Thank, thank all of you.
So, I would like to now ask if there are other members of the board who want to share reflections and good news, and then we will to our next item of agenda. This is the board sharing, Kelly. It's a tough one to follow, isn't it?
I have a couple, just congratulations to Kentucky School for the Blind, Kentucky School for the Deaf classes of 2024. Two excellent graduations. Again, Greta and her team were there in force. Robin spoke at each event and just did a great job. It was wonderful. We had five graduates in each class, and it's always such a wonderful celebration. To Robin and the team, it was also lovely to see at both facilities, the kinds of infrastructure and fiscal improvements, physical plant improvements that have been made at both schools. We enjoyed an air-conditioned gym at the Kentucky School for the Deaf, and we were back in the wonderful auditorium for the first time since 2019, perhaps, at the Kentucky School for the Blind. So, it was great to be on both campuses. Congratulations to both principals for excellent events and especially to those 10 2024 graduates.
Well, and thank you, Lou, for representing us along with the KDE staff at these events. Those are special students and represent a real treasure that we get to launch into further educational and community service at these events. Anyone else?
I just wanted to just throw in a special thanks to Patrice and Joanne and Jamie. No blubbering, just to say that the three of you have been a gift to me personally and to this board and to the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And you have, the three of you share gifts that I believe are the gifts of wisdom, discernment, and that pervasive optimism and hope. And you have been irreplaceable members of this team, and it has been a pleasure to serve alongside you.
Further items, yes, please.
I typically always have items, as Randy knows. Well, to follow along with Lou with graduation, so my son graduated from Boone County High School on Sunday. So, he will be attending University of Kentucky Martin School of Public Policy, studying public policy. And my daughter is heading to Ireland tomorrow for this study abroad program for eight weeks out of University of Kentucky. So, I'm proud of my two kids. Back in May, Randy and I attended the Northern Kentucky Maker Expo, which is all-around STEAM and getting hands-on with kids. We had over 1,200 people attend that event. It is put on by a group of volunteers of us who just do it for the love of getting kids hands-on STEAM activities, and it was an incredible experience. Sunday, I'm heading to Owensboro for the Pritchard Committee's Groundswell Conference, All Around Family Engagement. I've been asked to present at the NASB New Member Institute, a session with a student and a teacher representative on board of having the different voices at the table. And NASB has a call for proposal for the conference in Louisville. So, hopefully, lots of our schools will put in conferences. There'll be something new this year. There'll be a gallery walk area. So, if you don't want to present during a full conference, any of our schools that are doing innovative things could put in for the gallery walk and so that people can walk around and share during one of the sessions at that conference. So, changing the format up a little bit.
I do want to say that the NASB event... I do want to say that the NASB event here is an occasion that we should approach with some strategy and vision about how we want to represent our work as a way of welcoming and taking full advantage of the opportunity to share. So we'll get back to that shortly.
Yeah, I just have one more also. I had the privilege of attending the 95th Kentucky FFA State Convention that was held in Lexington this past weekend. Matt, and pronounce his last name for me. C.A.
Calli.
C.H.A.L.I.F.F.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm still not getting that, but I understand. But anyway, he had sent me an invitation back in March and being an old middle, not being a farmer, not old middle school teacher, and it was to judge the Middle School Extemporaneous Public Speaking Contest on Monday. And I said to sure, I would love to come back and be with my favorite people in the whole wide world. Middle school folk are middle school folk.
Yes.
And it was a joy to be there and got to meet him and the kids were everywhere. There were buses, they had a whole section down at Rupp Arena with just buses. Buses go this way and they're all lined up from counties all across the state. And it was just heartwarming to see that many students from different places coming together for this contest. The decorations for the FFA Convention were gorgeous. It was a class act. Class act. So just wanted to thank the CTEs. Matt is in the Division of Student Transition and Career Readiness and the staff there for all their support. Because sometimes middle school, I did not, either the school that I taught at, we didn't have a middle school FFA program, but then now they do and they're very, very growing, it looks like, in leaps and bounds. It was just exciting. It was exciting. I don't get excited very easy, but this was exciting. And just to feel the energy and the teachers there and the camaraderie that, you know, they're working with Locust Trace over here and then the kids over here going to Edith Jones Hayes and on and on and on. And I think we're right on the right track with what we're trying to do to get to what Secretary Link talks about, those soft skills in post-secondary. So thank you for allowing me to share that and I will judge anytime. It was really fun.
Thank you for your representation of the board and sharing your incredible skills with those students in yet another venue of learning.
Oh, yeah.
That's wonderful. Someone else? Holly? Okay, we will, I'm going to ask that we round back and end this item where we started by offering our retiring colleagues from the board a standing ovation. And we got through that without, I don't think it took a whole box of tissues. Maybe I have. The next item on our, I don't know. Thank you both and Jamie. The next item on our agenda is a report from the President of the Council on Post-Secondary Education. Dr. Thompson is not able to attend in person, but he has provided a written report that you will find in the portal. And so at this point, I'm going to call on Secretary Link, thank him for his attendance and ask for his report.
Good morning again and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Apologies that I can't be with you there in person. And if I may, also thank our departing members for their dedication and their commitment to this mission. And they also pointed out why I always carry a handkerchief with me wherever I go. But my report will be very brief. I know we're a little behind schedule and some of it may be repetitive. With the Education and Labor Cabinet, we're not like the Transportation Cabinet or others where a project begins and a project completes. We're always grinding away toward our mission of workforce development and other aspects of the cabinet. But just to highlight a few for the board, you may have recently seen in the media that Kentucky is a member of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library and every zip code in Kentucky now has a local affiliate with that. So we are very happy to achieve that milestone. We have hired two staff members in our Department of Libraries and Archives to help manage this program. And there is also an advisory board that is chaired by former First Lady Jane Beshear to help the program with fundraising and just overall promotions and awareness of the program to maintain the sustainability of the program. The General Assembly did appropriate some funding, but we know that we're going to need to continue raising resources to continue the program going forward. You may have also seen that after a long and torturous history over the last almost four years, we have entered into a contract to replace Kentucky's antiquated unemployment insurance system. And we don't have to relive all the horror stories of unemployment insurance during the pandemic and also with the terrible natural disasters we had with tornadoes and flooding and other events. But this is a real milestone for us. It will take about two years to implement, but we've already started detailed planning and design with the vendor and the other partners within the state government like COT and others. So that's really, it's been a long time coming and it's going to be a lot of work. I don't want to dismiss the amount of work it's going to take, but we are going to get this done and hopefully in about two years. But we will phase in the implementation so that some areas of the system will come online sooner than others. Our work continues and we're expanding our work with our collaboration with other workforce partners, including the Department of Education and Career and Technical Education with Dr. Hargis and her team. But we're now looking to accelerate our engagement with employers across the state. We have been running two pilot programs with two employers and now we're working with the Economic Development Cabinet and others, the Chamber of Commerce, to identify other employers with whom we can start dedicated services with them to address their workforce needs. And the whole point, or one of the major points of this effort is to give employers a single point of contact that they can call when they have workforce needs, either training or they need, they have openings for employees that they're looking for. And instead of them trying to navigate state government websites and other information sources, they have one person they can call and that person will know all of the other resources that are available and can call on those resources to assist that employer with their needs. This is partially what Governor Beshear heard on a recent trip to Germany and Central Europe from employers over there as we work to continue recruiting global employers to the Commonwealth. I may have mentioned before that the Everybody Counts Program was not refunded by the General Assembly in the last session, but because of the importance of the program and the results that we're seeing, we have worked to cobble together the necessary funding to continue the core services, which is basically the in-school services that we're providing in terms of coaching and other assistance to students who are looking for help with their future, whether it is pursuing post-secondary education, trade school, apprenticeship, or some other career-based goal. So we're happy to continue that program and we'll do everything we can to keep that going. And then in the next session, we'll, next budget session, we'll advocate for that funding as well. And the last thing I'll mention with great thanks to interim Commissioner Kenny. I believe new Commissioner Fletcher will be beginning effective July 1. And we would appreciate the opportunity from the cabinet to have a dedicated conversation with Dr. Fletcher and Dr. Hargis and others at KDE to enhance and strengthen our partnership with KDE in terms of workforce development and career preparedness. So we look forward to that. We'll give him time to get his feet on the ground. I know he'll be drinking from a fire hose for a few weeks, but that is something we are very interested in doing sooner rather than later. So Madam Chair, that concludes my report to the board and I'll be happy to address any questions or comments the members may have.
Secretary Link, your reports are always intriguing and encouraging. We find a way to do what we need to do. The example in this instance is the Everyone Counts Initiative. And we are just really grateful for the dedication and competence with which we are advancing our partnership with your agency. And the Education and Labor Cabinet is a place that we ought to be comfortably aligned and I feel that that is absolutely the way it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fletcher, when he comes on board, will be ready to, I think he's going to be ready to step in and take on the full scope of this work sooner rather than later. Thank in major part to his interest and dedication and to Robin's care of him.
Yes.
As she has already started the initiation. So thank you again for that reporter. Are there any comments or questions for Secretary Link? Hearing that, I'm going to ask Robin if she would offer her report and bring us into the world of taking care of the resources that we have and preparing for a major baton handoff.
Thank you so much, Chair Robinson. It is with kind of bittersweet emotions today that I address you as the last board meeting as interim commissioner. It's been a true honor to serve the Commonwealth in this capacity and I am genuinely excited about Dr. Fletcher joining us on July 1. I feel he will bring capable leadership to us. He'll bring success and innovation to us. And we have already started the passing of the baton a little bit. I'm enjoying Friday meetings with him and we talk very frequently, just trying to get him into the ebb and flow of things here at the Department of Education. I was going to share a little bit of things that have been happening since the last time that I was with you. As Lou suggested, we did have the pleasure of participating in graduation ceremonies at both the Kentucky School for the Deaf and Kentucky School for the Blind. And thank you to Lou for representing the board. It was really exciting and a joyful experience to see the pride on the faces of the graduates, their families, and all the teachers and staff and administration at both of our schools that worked so hard and tirelessly to make sure that we recognize the exceptional achievements of these students. So those, both events, of course, there were some tears shed in both of those, but a great celebration of the work of our students. On Monday, I had the pleasure of joining Senator Stephen West, Representative James Tipton, and Dr. Fletcher, who joined us in Bourbon County to provide an update on literacy instruction across the Commonwealth and unveil our new statewide reading research center, which will be in partnership with the University of Louisville. This center presents a significant partnership as our department looks forward to collaborating to set annual goals and a comprehensive research agenda focused on evaluating early reading models, instructional resources, and evidence-based practices. Our students must have every opportunity to strengthen their reading skills and our teachers must be equipped and empowered to teach reading effectively. I want to celebrate the members of the Office of Teaching and Learning here at the department for their hard work in providing high-quality resources to educators across the state. Their efforts have paid the way for initiatives like this new reading research center, ensuring our students have access as top-tier educational opportunities. As I conclude my remarks today, I guess I would be remiss if I didn't ask the chair's indulgence for a few thank yous to express my appreciation to so many people. First, to the KDE members who bestowed in me your trust by allowing me to serve. I'm so appreciative of your time and your talents and your dedication to the students of the Commonwealth. I have treasured working alongside you as we continued the United We Learn Focus, Portraits of a Learner, and so many other important initiatives. Kentucky is so fortunate that we have a board that always puts students first. And I've really enjoyed getting to know you each professionally, but also personally, to sit beside you at board meetings where whispers do occur, to learn about your families and your educational experiences, your sense of humor, and your passion. To the members of the Kentucky General Assembly, as well as boards, commissions, councils, advisory groups, and our sister agencies that provide input and advice from a wide variety of perspectives about what they desire and feel are necessary for our students. My thanks for the opportunity to listen. It is my opinion that for the vast majority of us, we have a common goal to create a world-class education system where students achieve at high levels, have opportunities to access high-quality instruction and teachers, and to become productive and successful citizens. You know, there are times we will disagree on how best to achieve those goals, but in the end, we all want what is best for our students. To the superintendents across the Commonwealth, thank you for your acceptance of me in this position, allowing me the absolute pleasure to be in your districts, your schools, and your classrooms, who shared with me your pride and excitement in the good work that is going on across Kentucky in our public schools. You know, I have a t-shirt at home that says, "Kentucky Kids Can Do Anything." And you opened your doors to let me see it firsthand and it has been amazing. To the teachers, administrators, all the support staff in our local districts, and our educational partners, thank you for making the magic happen academically, socially, and emotionally, operationally, and logistically, always supporting students. I keep in mind that without you, nothing else happens. I have traveled, some say from Pikeville to Paducah, but I will say from Livingston to Johnson and lots of stops in between. While I've had the chance to celebrate and acknowledge just a few of the best of the best, I can also say at each location, there were adults who were caring, welcomed me with open arms, to eagerly show me what their kids can do, to show me how they support each other, and to give me a taste of their school's uniqueness and hospitality. To all the staff here at KDE, thank you for your dedication and service to Kentucky students and all those that support them and for the support and friendship I have felt from you each day. As public servants, I understand you don't necessarily serve with an expectation of recognition and accolades, but you are so deserving. I was always the most nervous when I was in front of the KDE all meetings and conversations with the commissioner because I was with my peers, but your words of encouragement and forgiveness when I made a misstep came just at the right time. And while every leader believes their office is the best, a special thanks to the Office of Finance and Operations. It gave me the ability to take this position in the first place because I knew they would never miss a beat and they didn't. To the KDE leadership team and the staff of the commissioner's office, I have a book called Organizing Genius and it's one that I've had on my desk during my tenure. I have often picked it up at moments of doubt about the path to take or the decision to make. The overall reassuring theme of that book is, "None of us is as smart as all of us." It was a reliable reminder that no- It was a reliable reminder that no leader excels without the valuable support, input, and advice of those around her. I have leaned on this group the most, consulted them, depended on them and their areas of expertise, and voices of reason. The leadership team has my respect and admiration as highly qualified professionals. They are a great team. And finally, to the students. To Jonathan and Landon, the brothers in the second grade, who FaceTime me regularly and who shared a bus ride with me in their district. To Brock, my historically astute tour guide at KSB. To Bentley, with his inquisitive mind from KSD. To Brenna, who talked to me about her dream of being a teacher. To the kindergarten students, who filled my hands and my pockets, overflowing with snacks because they knew sharing was important, and they were empathetic for my long ride home. And to all the others that asked questions and gave answers, shared their voice and opinions, gave a hug or a smile, thank you. As Joanne said, they are the why, and I have so enjoyed being part of their celebrations and success. At our next board meeting, Dr. Fletcher will have joined us as the next commissioner of KDE. I am honored that he has asked me to continue to help with this transition, and I look forward to welcoming him along with the rest of the great team here at KDE. Chair Robinson, this concludes my blubbering remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Drink of water.
Drink of water. Thank you all.
I would say that we have now been through the most difficult part of this. But it is also an essential part, because we're growing and changing. We can't keep things static, because that just won't happen. And if we remain static, we become the ones that are the chink in the whole system and not a part of the whole system. So we are embracing of change, but we will acknowledge at times, it is, there's a painful aspect of it, as well as the exciting and essential, embracing the essential prospect of it. So I thank you all for letting us go through this process of acknowledging that we are in for a transition that is exciting and leaving behind relationships and dynamics that have been very, very, very gratifying and beneficial to the best aspirations that we on this board share. So with that, I am going to ask if we would look at the consent agenda. As a reminder, this item requires a vote, and it consents of consent agenda and allows for approval of several items with one action. KDE staff identified these items as those that are non-controversial and routine in nature. The consent agenda was distributed to members in advance of the meeting to allow sufficient time for review. At this time, I will ask, are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have moved to the regular discussion or action items? If no items are moved, then I will ask the board to entertain a motion to approve all the items in the consent agenda. That includes the certification of non-public schools, appointment of at-large member of the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Board of Control, appointment of KSB Advisory Board Member, 2024-25 preschool grant allotment system and funding rates, the indirect cost rates, the KBE regular meeting calendar, the hearing officers' report, the litigation report. Is there a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Poe. Any further question? I will then put the vote to you all. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. The motion carries. At this time, we will dismiss to our committees. The United We Learn Committee will remain in here in the State Boardroom. The State Schools Committee will meet in Conference Room 516, and we are scheduled to reconvene, I would say, 10:40. Thank you. We are now adjourned to committee meetings. We'll ask the board to reconvene so we can return to the agenda. This is a packed day, and Holly, would you mind making the committee?
I would be up to.
Okay. So we'll start with the report from the United We Learn Committee.
Well, we were excited to hear a report from Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd and Vice Chair Dr. Jim Flynn. They talked today about the quickly moving work of the Kentucky United We Learn Council. I asked Meredith to put this slide up, and you have access to these slides in your portal. But this is really exciting, because, you know, we hear people talking about, you know, like rocket science and like sometimes comparing things to that, and this is really showing us that education is rocket science, and it's really putting legs to that work. So when you look here, you'll see that the moonshot is to build a prosperous Kentucky, we will launch an accountability system that is meaningful and useful to all our learners. And so to make that happen, they have developed a system to move through to get us to that goal. And you can see, like, in the fall, Fall '24, we're testing prototypes to get us there. I mean, that's, I don't know, it just feels really exciting to see that, oh, this is really happening. It's not just an idea out there, but we are launching into this work. So there are a lot of other things that they talked about. They put together some work groups, and those work groups are centered around a menu of options for districts, for learning with local districts, district supports for quality, engaging and communicating with communities. So these work groups are breaking that work up and helping to, I don't know, get things ready for districts to use and to implement things. So there is a very special convening July 29, and they are asking that, I don't know, Meredith will probably organize so that we are in compliance with things, and not too many of us all at once, but to come and see some of this good work that's happening. They're going to actually present the prototypes, and that makes it real. So I think as many of us as can come, put July 29 on your calendar. And I just want to again thank that committee and the great work that is going on for making this vision come to life. So, thank you.
Thank you, Holly. And I would suggest that board members kind of put a pin in this topic, because I suspect we'll be returned to this in August during the retreat, when we're thinking about the path forward. I mean, we said we were going to the moon. We're on the way, but we are not there yet.
We've got to buckle in.
Yeah, there you go. Now it's time to buckle up. Great, great. Dr. Poe.
I would like to say that the ATC centers are at the moon, and they're doing a lot of great things. So I'm glad you guys are catching up. I'd just like to report that, you know, we had a great report on 50 of our ATC centers across the state servicing over 22,000-plus students. The ACT/EP assessments were great. We had a 67.7% success rate of those that's taking the test. Some areas are very well noted, carpentry and welding, and some of the great things that we heard about. 47% of our students are taking senior classes at post-secondary institutions, so that's amazing, 47%. Think about that. Several years ago, that didn't even exist, that almost half of our students are earning credit. 3,403 students total. Belfry ATC received a grant and continue working on their tiny house project. If you've never seen those, you should Google it. They sold one house, a small tiny house, for $60,000 this year to recoup as part of that grant. Isn't that awesome? You need to Google that sometime and see those little tiny houses. Several of male individuals should take stock into that, so they're much better than when you get kicked out to the doghouse. They are awesome. They're really awesome.
Randy has a keen sense of entrepreneurial opportunities.
That's right, exactly. You can sell these things. I mean, amazing. They're amazing. Bulley County, Wagner Electric Apprenticeship Program is just a phenomenal example of working with industry partners and these students coming out with their electrical license and working there. Another example of life experiences at the Four Rivers Academy, earning their Silver Seals certificates, and the life experiences of those students that they had when they travel across the country, when you think that they're still in high school, and the life experiences, it's just amazing. The Trailblazer Early College and Career Academy, you know, just doing awesome things. And I also wanted to read you, since I didn't have my quote, I didn't get back in time to put a slide up there, but not to be outdone by that other group over there. My grandkids' pictures are coming up, so hold on there for a second. Bear with me as I go back here and get the quote that I have to read. This is from, and of all places, and I didn't tell them to do this, but this is coming from a parent from the Boone County ATC at school up north. "I want to thank you so much for being there for these vocational students and the efforts that vocational schools put into these students' success. You have definitely made a change in my student's life that will always be part of him." Thank you. That was a parent quote sent to the principal. Oh, there you go.
Like magic. It's like magic.
There you go. You've got to have Meredith, Wonder Woman, next to you, right behind us, our superhero. Look at that. So a lot of great things that's occurring there. And Carroll County, for example, increased 86% in their pass rate for the students getting their career industry certificates, and what was significant is they doubled the amount of students that were taking courses at the same time. And Estelle County, another child who was doing an apprenticeship, was hired by Chrysler, you know, coming out of school as a high school senior, hired right away, making $48 an hour, so that's very nice livable wage coming out of school with his automotive apprenticeship and his license. So that's one half of our meeting. The other half was from the school for the deaf, presented by our Associate Commissioner and her director, doing great jobs there. The CEA, the School for the Deaf received a CEASD accreditation, one of only 31 schools across the country with a full accreditation that they received from 2023 to 2028, which is amazing. Self-reflection is a great way of learning and leading and getting a seal of importance for the parents that send their children there. Some of the commendations that we received was physical safety and assessment, technology, mental health services, and a variety of opportunities for our students there. Some of the increased things that the School for the Deaf will be working on this year will be continued increased communication, was given a list of things that they're doing in dorm life, and additional KDE presence led by Commissioner Kenny there, and the rest of staff getting down there and helping in professional development or whatever services were needed. They are also working on upgrading their CTE, advanced manufacturing, and increasing job expiration opportunities for our students. Also working in the alternative extracurricular, some pathways, robotics and archery was two of the things mentioned, and there are a few more there. They're also going to be focusing on outreach programs to identify and promote long-term opportunities for our students. So both of our departments there are ACT and are School for the Deaf. Just tremendous things that they're doing for our students across the board, and we really appreciate the work of the department staff. Like I said, reflection learning is some of the best learning that we got, and that's what our group was doing, was reflecting on a lot of great things that our students are doing across the Commonwealth of Kentucky, making us all proud, making us all look good. So whenever, if anybody's there saying anything negative, just call up our two associate commissioners, and you'll have a lot of positive things to tell them.
They can set them straight, right?
That's right.
Well, and I think the, another gratifying aspect of both these reports is that while there is much to celebrate, we are equally keen on recognizing the opportunities for improvement, the challenges yet unaddressed, and really embracing the challenges of very, very ambitious goals and aspirations. So thank you both for those reports. We'll now ask Todd Allen and Deborah Webb to come to the table for the report on our local board member in training review.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Board members, this is an annual item that you may recall from previous years. State statute provides the number of hours that our local Board of Education members have to complete for in-service training on an annual basis, and then state board regulation designates the Kentucky School Boards Association as the provider of a portion of that training, and they're also our agent for tracking that training and reporting to you on an annual basis, the training that they have offered, those board members who unfortunately did not complete their training, asking for exceptions for those who may have been appointed for a partial year to give them some grace in getting their training, and then ultimately for those that don't fulfill the requirements, our office here at KDE will report them to the Attorney General's Office for further action. And then I think Deborah will also talk to you about KSBA's training plan for the upcoming year. So I'll turn it over to Deborah Webb from the Kentucky School Boards Association.
Thank you, Todd. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As introduced, I'm Deborah Webb, and I'm the Director of Board Team Development at the Kentucky School Boards Association, and I'm here today to report on service hour training for members of Kentucky's 857 school boards, school board members, sorry. We are very proud of the men and women who serve on the 171 district school boards in the state. It is important to remember, as I go through all these numbers today, that these men and women have day jobs outside of the school system. We have doctors and lawyers, electricians, administrative assistants, and even some retired professionals among the ranks of school board members. These are people who have husbands and wives and children and grandchildren. They have hobbies, responsibilities, and, well, just normal life going on, in addition to volunteering to serve their districts in school board service. School board service is often a thankless job for which the members do not receive compensation. The testimony here for our members is their dedication to their districts and to the children of Kentucky. We think they're pretty special, and we take our job of representing them and of ensuring that they are prepared to lead and serve the people in their district very seriously. Before I begin talking about the numbers, I just want to point out one error in the report. On page 11... On page 11, inadvertently, the last two columns say 2022 hours. That should be 2023, of course. So in 2023, our members earned 11,724.25 hours of training. 3,735 hours were earned above the minimum that they were required to get, and 753 members actually were the ones who earned those hours above the minimum. We did, however, have 59 members who did not earn their training hours by the end of December 31st of 2023. That was 263 hours that they did not complete. Eighteen of those 59 people were appointed between March 1st and December 31st. And 29 of those people did not complete their hours. Seventeen of those have now completed. And as part of our report and part of our action, we're asking to reconcile that and allow hours that they, that they completed after December 31st to count toward their 2023 hours. And then 12 of those 59 people did not return to board service as of January 1st of 2024. So in 2025, some things are changing for us. Some of the new laws that have passed and that will go into effect beginning July 15th kind of changed the way KSB will be looking at training. Some of our topical state mandates have changed for the people who had to take those. In the past and up until now, finance, superintendent and evaluation, superintendent evaluation and ethics were required by our members every single year. The new laws will require individuals within their first 24 months to take those topics of finance and superintendent evaluation during that time. And then, of course, everyone will take an ethics, an hour in ethics every year. And they have also added a mandate for our members to take open records, open meetings within the first 12 months for new members, and then for our more seasoned members, one time every four years. So these changes are making a big impact at KSBA. We're making a significant investment in our training portal to change the programming. We have to think about how we track training a little bit differently now. We're very used to being able to track it by calendar year. Everything is from January 1st to December 31st. Now, this is going to have us to look at a more individual way of tracking people because it's going to be based on when you started service. The day you started service is the day we have to look at within 12 months of that, within 24 months of that. And another thing that kind of changed just a little bit is some of our members who have a more extended service period will still be required to get four hours of training each calendar year, but they will not have those state mandated required topics that they have to follow. So we think that the most important thing that this will do for KSBA is allow us to expand our training opportunities to members, giving them new opportunities to pursue some of our more topical sessions and things such as technology, conflict resolution, leadership, social media threats to our children, team building, and even some hands-on workshop training that we're, that we're looking at. We are super excited for both KSBA and most especially for our members. Professional development is so important, and we take this very seriously at KSBA, and are very fortunate to be able to offer that to our members. Does anyone have any questions?
Just for clarification, I will just point out in your materials, on page 10, that is the list of the board members who were appointed mid-year, and your action item would request that we grant them an extension of time to get their training. Beginning on page 11, and then at page 12 is the list of board members who did not complete their training hours for 2023. The ones that have an asterisk by their name did complete the required number of hours, however, in 2024. So we would ask that they, those hours in 2024, we applied retroactively to meet their 2023 requirements. And then, beginning on page 17, is the plan for 2025 that KSBA will implement for training board members.
Thank you, Todd. Yes.
And then on, on Appendix D, Attachment D, those without the asterisk, those names will be reported to the Attorney General.
So the way that works, we notify them that they have been reported to us from KSBA. They have 30 days to correct, you know, get training, whether they contact KSBA, sign up for an online program, or if KSBA has any offerings within the next 30 days where they could cure that. Then after that 30-day period, they're reported to the Attorney General's Office.
Is that something we do or KSBA does?
We do it.
And can KSBA accommodate those requests?
We can.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the 2023 report, 2023 exceptions, and 2025 plan as required by 702-KAR1:115, annual in-service training of district board members. Is there such a motion?
I move.
Thank you. Holly, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Julie. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment or are there other questions? I'll call the question then. All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you so much. It looks like you've got a really, really ambitious task to provide the new content and keeping good records of participation. But I, I think there's a lot of attention to word efficacy, and we want to support all those board members in meeting this requirement. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the next item, we'd ask Beth Hargus to come to the table to discuss the issues associated with work-based learning and some requests of us.
Good afternoon again. Next slide, please. So I wanted to start with what I refer to as traditional work-based learning, and we are so excited to say that, now, this was the end of May, we had 752 work-based learning records in Infinite Campus that are meeting the traditional requirements so that these students would be designated as post-secondary ready. And of course, this is going to go into the accountability calculation for the schools. All right, next slide, please. And let me also tag on to that, schools do have until the 31st to get that information entered into Infinite Campus. So we do anticipate that that number will continue to rise. Okay, so last year, KRS 158.6455 was amended to include as a measure of accountability an apprenticeship, co-op, or internship experience completed outside of the regular school day, week, or year, and that is not included as a high school course. And so this measure provides a means for a student to attain a post-secondary readiness designation when they are unable to participate in the traditional work-based learning. And sometimes that might happen. They've got a lot of extracurricular activities. They don't have time to work throughout the, the school year. So there's a lot of different reasons that it would be necessary for them to, to do it outside of the school day. The regulations which provide, or which guide the approval process for these include, and I'm 703-KAR5270, and this stipulates successful completion and a minimum of 300 hours. And then we also have 705-KAR4041, which includes sufficient knowledge and skills necessary for success in the experience. So the regulation requires the experience be aligned to a credential or associate degree and subsequently approved by the KBE following input from LSAC. So in 2023, LSAC provided input to the KBE regarding the regulation amendments, and you all did approve those in 2023. So we set a deadline of May 1st, and we knew that, you know, we wanted to extend it out as far as we could, but we also knew that these needed to come to you all no later than the June board meeting. So we set a cutoff date of May 1st for those to be submitted. And we did receive 42 applications this year. So based on the statute and regulations, our office utilized the scoring questions displayed to determine approval or denial of those applications that we received. Applications which were submitted without required documentation and which might have been approved otherwise were actually returned to the districts so that they could make the correction and get them back to us. And just as a reminder, the non-traditional work-based learning that this entails does not have to be tied to a specific CTE pathway for approval. So for example, you may have a student that's taken advanced placement history courses, political science. Then they do a co-op or have a summer job in an attorney's office. And so that would be an alignment to a post-secondary credential and would be subject to approval. All right, so as stated, we received 42 applications, and we did try to complete a very thorough review process, and we determined that eight of those applications, or 19%, met the criteria for approval. Now, we know, and we realize this is, it's a low percentage, but when you think about the 42 applications that we received, that's really only 5% of the total work-based learning opportunities when you factor in those traditional experiences. So we reviewed the applications twice to make sure that, you know, we weren't missing anything and that we were approving them according to the statute and the reg. And we actually sought input from interim Commissioner Kenny, incoming Commissioner Fletcher, and Deputy Commissioner Allen. And so as with any new initiative, there's always a learning curve. We firmly believe that in the years to come that we will be seeing more of these applications submitted and that there will be more approvals along the way. Again, we received 42, and I will say, they, they can submit these throughout the course of the year because we're happy to bring them to you throughout the year for approval. But out of the 42 we received, 40 of them came to us on April 29th and 30th. So again, we had a very short turnaround, but we really did try to do our diligence in getting them approved. All right, next slide, please. So again, because it's a new accountability measure, we have tried to provide technical assistance to districts throughout the year and will continue to do that. We've worked with districts one-on-one. We have, you know, we've referred them to our resources that are on our website. We've taken a lot of phone calls, and we will be, again, presenting this at our summer conference just to remind people on how to do it. So we are asking for approval for the eight that we are recommending to be included in accountability.
Let me, ambitious standards, but glad there's interest. So any other comments or questions? I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the work-based learning application and approval criteria, and the recommended approvals and denials based on the statutory requirements of KRS 158.6455. May I have such a motion?
Come on.
Dr. Poe is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Joanne. Any further discussion?
I might just add, we had this conversation in the chair call. What remedy do those who are denied? Is there a waiver process? What happens to the ones who've been denied?
Well, we will inform them that they have been denied. And of the eight, we sent eight back to the districts in order for them to correct, and we only received five of those back. And then out of those five, I believe two of those were recommended. And so every, once you all have finalized this, then we will be letting them know via Infinite Campus that whether they've been approved or denied.
In instances where there was just no alignment with the job to a credential or associate degree, there's not an opportunity for those to be remedied via the statute.
So the, you stand ready to assist the further development of this as a viable learning opportunity? So that is, that's the good news for all of us. I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item, we would ask Dr. Tucker to come to the table along with his colleagues, Mickey Ray, Sarah Peace, Crystal Rowland.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Robinson, members of the KBE, and interim Commissioner Kenny. And like everyone has said, job well done. Thank you. We have two items before you this morning, and that's the repeal of 704-KAR3.303, Required Academic Standards, and 704-KAR8.130. That's the Kentucky Academic Standards for Visual and Performing Arts. And just one quick thing before I turn it over to my very talented team here. Want to thank the board and the commissioner and all of our folks here at KDE and our colleagues across the Commonwealth in supporting the arts and how important it is in shaping the lives of students. Mickey Ray?
Thank you so much, Dr. Tucker. Good morning, or good afternoon, maybe I should say now, but very happy to be here to bring forward the Kentucky Academic Standards for Visual Performing Arts. At the table with me, I have Sarah Peace, who is the Policy Advisor for the OTL, and directly next to me is Crystal Rowland. She is the Director of the Division of Program Standards. And I also must introduce Jessica Green. Jessica Green was the, the leader in the facilitation of this process and worked with the numerous educators who contributed to this draft document that we bring before you. So very grateful for her and for her leadership in this work as well. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Sarah to talk about the regulations specifically.
Hello. As Dr. Woods Tucker shared, we have two regulations before you today. The first is a new regulation to establish the Kentucky Academic Standards for Visual and Performing Arts with the material incorporated by reference. We are also asking for the repeal of 704-KAR3303. And you may remember that as we have been completing this process for each content area, we have been removing the standards from 3303 and placing them into their own regulation under 704-KAR Chapter 8. And we are very excited to share, this is the last content area, and those are the two that we brought for you, brought before you today. And then Mickey will share with you more of the statutory basis.
Thank you, Sarah. So KRS 158.6453 is the guiding statute for this work. I'm sure you are very familiar with this one over the, the course of your service on the board. We are happy to say that the, the law requires that the visual performing arts be included in this process, and so I think that that is very important in just adding to the power and impact of that regulation on the student experience throughout the Commonwealth. It does rely on the extensive support of teachers, and so we want to, we want to thank those who provided service to the committee and all of the extensive hours that they gave on our behalf to develop this draft. We also want to thank the districts for releasing them for that work. We do not take it for granted that it is very difficult to be away from classrooms at this time, but that the standards matter and the work matters for student equity. And so again, we're very grateful for their support. You can see there in the top portion of that, it does require the Kentucky Department of Education to implement this comprehensive process, and the, the field plays a critical role in us being able to bring forward these new regulations to you today. So I'm going to turn it over to Crystal Rowland. Her division most directly leads this work, and so she's going to walk you through this specific process.
Thank you, Mickey. As you can see on the screen, there is a process that we do follow for each of our content areas when we are going through the revision process. And so in that bottom row, right in the middle, that's where we are here today, where we're presenting the Kentucky-
presenting the Kentucky Academic Standards for Visual Performing Arts to you, the Kentucky Board of Education, for your approval, and then it will go into the regulatory process. Prior to coming here today, we started in that very first box, and that's the process of an application process to select and establish our advisory panels and our review committee to partake on this very important work. So these committees are made up of K-12 teachers, representatives from post-secondary education and business and community members, and membership for this specific content area included just a balance across our geographic representation across the state, but also our five arts disciplines of dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts. And we also had representatives from diverse programs, including schools with a performing arts focus. And as Mickey said, it's an extensive process, and so we are deeply appreciative of our, especially our classroom teachers who are coming to this process. It's an intense investment of time and effort, and I think that it's one of the pieces that's so critical for our standards is that we have classroom teachers at the helm, looking at the public feedback and making those recommended edits to our standards. There was a 30-day public comment period for the current Kentucky Academic Standards for VPA, and the committee meant to respond to that public comment. They also reviewed current research and other state standards to develop a draft standards document, and then that draft was released for an additional 30-day public comment period. And following that, the committee is reconvened to respond to that final feedback and then created the draft that we're presenting to you today. So the committee found four main needs reflected in that first round of public feedback, and that was clarity in language specifically to the discipline, a need for coherent vertical progression of developmentally appropriate skills, a desire for alignment with research-based artistic processes for arts education, and a desire for clarity that would support new teachers while allowing autonomy for our experienced teachers. The committee developed a writer's vision statement based on three themes: destination, purpose, and values, and that guided their work. These themes throughout the process guided their work and focused on equity and support, clarity and consistency, and creativity and growth. So on the next slide, you'll see that there were 146 responses to our call for public feedback across two public comment periods, and respondents could give feedback on one area or all of the five arts discipline standards. There was broad stakeholder representation, and we had additional feedback that was sought in the form of focus groups, and you can see those on the slide there as well. During that initial feedback, it did indicate a desire to remain aligned with the National Core Arts Standards. And then when we had our draft go out, the public feedback on that draft showed that over 75% of respondents selected to select the standards as is, and that remaining 25% provided a positive response with confirmation of acceptance. And overall, respondents were pleased with the redesign of the architecture, which supported usability, and the clarity of the standards language. So on the next slide, this is my favorite part. So the key shifts in the standards are listed here on the screen for you, and these include the addition of a front matter to really set up and anchor the document, but it was, and it was reorganized by discipline, and discipline-specific introductions were added. You'll notice the overview of the anchor standards on the slide. This is one of the key features, and it truly does anchor the standards throughout the five disciplines. As we look at their organization, you should see how these anchor standards and artistic processes support vibrant learning experiences for our Kentucky students, and they support the development of many of the competencies that local districts desire for their learners. So there are 11 anchor standards that are grouped under the artistic processes that they support, and they're color-coded to correspond with the National Core Arts Standards. The color coding supports the usability of the standards throughout the document, and additionally, it arguably makes it the most aesthetically pleasing standards document that we have in our library to date. So the blue section, you'll see that blue section is conceiving and developing new artistic ideas and work, and it focuses on the artistic process of creating. And anchor standards one through three correspond in supporting opportunities for students to develop their ability to create within the five arts disciplines, so that carries out throughout those five arts disciplines. The purple section, realizing artistic ideas and work through interpretation and presentation, focuses on the artistic processes of performing, producing, and presenting. And the anchor standards four through six correspond to skills and knowledge that support students with those artistic processes. The coral section, understanding and evaluating how the arts convey meaning, focuses on the artistic process of responding, and is supported through anchor standards seven through nine. And finally, the goldenrod-yellow section, relating artistic ideas and work with personal meaning and external context, focuses on the artistic process of connecting, and it is supported by anchor standards 10 through and 11. And we see through those processes that really supporting vibrant learning for our students and really focusing on those competencies that many of our districts have included in their local portraits, that we're really excited for them to have access to this. So what does that look like for a specific standard? So on this slide, you can see up in the top left corner, that's the identification information. So you'll see the discipline, so this is for dance, the artistic process, which is creating, and then the process component. In the top right, you'll see foundational information, and this is moved up to that top, so that really sets the teacher up to understand that foundational information that will be needed to guide learners through the experience. So we have the anchor standard, enduring understanding, essential question, and that key vocabulary that will be essential in that discipline. Beneath that box, you'll have the standards information itself. So there's grade and proficiency level, the standards coding, standards language, and again, key vocabulary. And you'll notice that in this example, there's kindergarten, grade one, and grade two, and that was one of the benefits of transitioning this to be created by discipline rather than by grade levels, is that if I'm a music teacher, I can see how my student is going to progress across kindergarten, grade one, and grade two. So it supports that progression within the disciplines themselves. And then the bottom box, you'll see the clarifications, and that just provides additional clarification and examples for all stakeholders to understand what truly should be at the heart of some of those learning experiences for our students. And so I'm happy to present these standards to you today for your review and your approval, and welcome any questions that you guys may have at this time.
Thank you so much. I want to, Dr. Woods Tucker, I want to commend your team for, one, taking on this enormous task of standard revision virtually across the whole curriculum and going to a discipline-based approach and a whole learner approach. I think this will certainly inform professional development as well as curriculum development, certainly even instructional design in ways that can really approach the learning process with vibrancy and a lot of intense engagement. So I'm really excited about it. Other questions or comments?
I am impressed with the level of the deeper learning that has taken place. Very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
It seems very user-friendly. I love the stuff at the top, like all of that. Looks like it would make planning lessons much more efficient.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I have the pleasure of, you know, trying to keep track of what's going on, but cheering these talented, talented folks on. And one of the things that I think that sometimes that goes missing, especially if you don't have a curriculum background, I was a former director of curriculum for a large school district in Ohio, is tying in the standards with the assessments and the teaching and learning as well as our focus, United We Learn. But for Mickey and her team and these talented folks here to put these anchor statements out there, that is unbelievable. I've had the pleasure of working in three states now, studied the curriculum. I've not seen it, so kudos to our team here at the Kentucky Department of Education, OTL Department, our teachers, and I know our teachers here on this board here know the importance of that, so thank you.
Well, with the further endorsement of the kudos to this team, and I mean, to take this on as a way to support all of the United We Learn goals and let everybody know you can do vibrant teaching and learning, it is, you know, we're here to get everybody on the playing field in that regard with high academic standards and teaching standards. So I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve 704-KAR 8:130 Kentucky Academic Standards for Visual and Performing Arts and repeal of 704-KAR 3:303, hallelujah, Required Academic Standards. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? Second. There's a motion and a second to adopt this motion and commend this team, I'm going to add, as a friendly amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Motion is carried. Big accomplishment, big check mark. Our next item concerns finance officer certification requirement, so we would ask Matt Ross to come to the table.
Good morning. Matt Ross, Associate Commissioner in the Office of Finance and Operations. Today I have with me Crystal Smith. She's my branch manager in the District Funding and Reporting Branch. So as we start this morning, it's been a well-deserved day of celebrations and some bittersweet and a lot of emotions, and I promise you that we will try not to cause any more tears.
Tears on this one.
Unless Matt cries.
So before you, we have a proposed amendment to our Finance Officer Certification Requirement Regulation. This regulation is probably better, about a decade old, better part of a decade old. There was legislation passed that required the department to promulgate regulations to sort of set forth the requirements for a school finance officer, sort of to make it more professional, right, to set certain standards, certain educational requirements, so that we developed a cadre of real professionals that, you know, had continuing educational requirements and some training requirements. And Crystal can run through some of the changes for us. I think, you know, we had reached a point through our experience in our office, as there were issues that had come up, things that could be corrected, also hearing from districts. So staff worked on this. We've taken it to LSAC twice, first for discussion only, just to get input and to see if we were on the right track. Great feedback there. Then we brought it back for LSAC proceeding this meeting, and it was approved unanimously. I think one of the big things we heard was around, you know, districts having trouble replacing finance officers, finding somebody that had the requisite educational background when you may have had somebody within your district that had been working in a finance-related role for an amount of time. Superintendents were interested in, you know, promoting, hiring these individuals as finance officers, and there was an impediment, and that was around the education. So in this proposed amendment, there is an ability for a district to hire somebody internally that has worked in school finance if they have a requisite number of years' experience. I think it's 10 years, right? So I'll let Crystal go ahead and run through some of the other changes. I think it's, you know, we wanted to make it as flexible for districts, give them as many options, but also retain that professionalism and sort of those high standards.
Yes. So Matt was right. We have, you know, recommending to add another possibility for qualification in the initial set, and it would be minimum of 10 years' experience in their finance department. That way, you know, those people who have that ability, you know, have had their boots on the ground, so we think they would make a good step moving forward as a finance officer. Another big update that we've noticed the past couple of years, you know, is getting a new, a new finance officer in, so, you know, going through the steps of hiring. So at that point, they need someone to do the daily work, so we've given the ability to hire an interim finance officer, and they, you know, they will stay there until they get a new one, a new, an official finance officer hired to kind of like have a transition. So that's really big. We've had a lot of comments from our local districts requesting that, so that's going to, that's been added. Another big step is currently the statute has five years for the initial provisional certificate to be awarded. They have five years to gain it, like if they didn't have the 20 hours in accounting, things like that.
Get the full certification.
Yeah, to get the, I'm sorry, to get the full certification. So we've kind of brought that down to three years to kind of push it a little bit, you know, get it a little bit faster. We've noticed they only need, usually need about a year, 18 months, so we just kind of decreased that requirement to three years. And then another one we've noticed, the mentor stipend was for $1,000, and just, you know, that was 10 years ago, so we requested it to be increased to $1,500. And so also, if a mentor, sometimes throughout the year, the first finance officer, they might leave within six months. So in the past, we haven't been able to give that mentor any monies for their six months of work. So at this point, if they make it to six months or over, they would get the minimum of $750. That helps keep our mentors happy and keep them, to want to put all that time and effort into it. So we've added that in there as a little, just to keep them happy. But I think that's our biggest refresh of this reg. I think it's kind of neat to kind of go through it. We've enjoyed it.
And of course, that stipend is paid by the department. It's not paid by the districts.
And you've taken this to LSAC?
Twice, yes.
Great. Thanks. All right. Any questions?
Qualification for the interim?
So the interim doesn't have to have a full certification, right? So the thinking was that the district would hire somebody that they felt was able. In order to keep that interim from just staying on, we've said that you can hire them for, through the end of the fiscal, the end of the school year, through the end of the fiscal year. And, but if you want to continue because you're still having trouble, then you would let Katie, you would ask, I guess it's not even, Katie approval, basically, to let us know and that you're going to continue that contract, because there was some fear that, you know, it could just keep rolling on without securing somebody that had those requisite requirements, but understanding a need to still be flexible, so we...
Yes. And most of the time, the interim that they've been requesting is a previous finance officer who's retired in a different district or someone like that. So they've already really do have the qualifications. They're just, they just don't want to work full-time.
Other questions, comments? I would ask the board to please entertain a motion to approve the amendment to 702-KAR 3:320 Finance Officer Certification Requirements. May I have such a motion? Thank you, Dr. Poe. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would just share with the board that I will abstain from voting on this item. I do some training for School Financial Management Institute out of my work at University of Kentucky, so in order to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest, I'll abstain.
I know. I'll just, Chair, I've listened to the LSAC meeting, so it was really good to have the background from the superintendent's discussions and their questions and how it's been walked through a number of times.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Now I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Say nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, Crystal, for your work. The next item, Matt, you're going to stay right where you are. We have a waiver request from Ludlow Independent Board of Education related to Section 4, parentheses, 4 of 702-KAR 4:050 Building Sites.
Thank you. It's a mouthful. It's a mouthful, but it's really sort of a simple kind of concept. Ludlow Independent is asking the KBE to waive that part of a regulation around a property acquisition that sort of says that a district can acquire property that's basically in the flood, 100-year floodplain. that's basically in the flood, 100-year, 100-year floodplain. Ludlow would like to buy 0.36 acres of property for a parking lot that's near their athletic facilities, which, you know, Ludlow's athletic facilities, I think, predate any of the 100-year-old, 100-year floodplain sort of concept. So our staff is comfortable with this. It's parking, you know, parking for their athletic facilities. It's a really small piece of property. Uh, our staff is supportive, and we would ask for, um, the waiver to be granted.
Any comment? Yes. Randy?
Second.
Okay. You moved to motion and second. All right. Thank you very much. Meredith, you got that?
I did, yes.
Okay. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And, uh.
I hope you don't rush.
We're now to the review items. Matt and Karen.
Karen. We're, we're two thirds through without any tears, so.
Everybody's still awake.
Everybody's still awake, too. Some laughs even, right? So this is a biannual, uh, staff note that we bring to the board. It really contains two different things that are separate, uh, but we always lump them together. One is sort of the audit update, the update of KDE's audit by the auditor of public accounts. So that's one part. And then the second part is, of course, the expenses of the commissioner and the Board of Education. So I'll let Karen sort of talk about, about those for us.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, yes, so the auditor's office released in March, the SWAC, which is our statewide single audit of Kentucky that's done annually, uh, that is released in two volumes. Volume one looks at our general accounting and finance processes within the department. And then volume two focuses on our federal grants. For our volume one audit, we did have two findings. Our first finding was, um, you know, you can't get, can't get away from COVID. It was related to the pandemic. We did have a change in our funding formula for SEEK. We use, we froze data, the ADA data. And so, um, the calculation was done, and there was, it resulted in a, a small error. It was, I think, 1.74% error in the SEEK amount for one district. That was in fiscal year '23. Um, and it has since been corrected, and that has been balanced out and taken care of. So no other corrective action on that finding. Um, our second finding fell directly in my division in June, when we do our very final last SEEK payment for the year. Once it comes to the budget branch and gets approved, sometimes between the different pieces and parts and allotments within SEEK, there has to be adjustments to the totals. That information is then sent to another, another branch, and they make the, they make the payment. Basically, they just charged it to the wrong accounting template. It came from the SEEK appropriation, but it just came from allotment that was, that was not base. So we did the appropriate transaction to fix that. The auditor's office did understand that, that, um, you know, we needed to look at our process. We have since created a new payment memo. We've got a process in place where, um, we have a, a check and balance for other people to review. It makes sure that the, that the two that are doing the approval and the processing are on the same page. Simply human error. So we have addressed that and corrected that. For our volume two, for our federal grants, I'm happy to say that we had no findings for those. So I'm very, very proud of, of our federal branch. They do a wonderful job with a lot of, of programs. The last is just the uniform guidance desk reviews that are done on our school districts. Um, and I believe that as of August the 29th of last year, that all of our school districts were complete and deemed acceptable. So I'll take any questions on the audit staff note. Also, you do have in the portal the commissioner and the, um, KBE expenditures.
Questions? Comments? Well, congratulations on the findings.
Thank you.
And, uh, the attention to any recommendations.
Thank you.
Provided. I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the presentation.
There's no action on yet.
Oh, okay.
So it's just informational.
Just information? Then thank you. It is interesting to get into some of these, um, audit findings. So now we come to some more celebration with sincerity, but maybe not with tears.
Yes, with sincerity.
We have the opportunity to present the Karam Award for Excellence in Education Policy. Interim Commissioner Kenny, please facilitate this presentation.
Thank you so much, Chair Robinson. As I listened this morning, you know, we've already mentioned David Karam's name.
Several.
And I think back so fondly of his time on the board with us. And so this next award does honor Senator David Karam. David Karam served on the Kentucky Board of Education from 2009 through 2016. He served for 33 years in the Kentucky State Senate and as Chair of the Senate Education Committee. During his tenure in the Kentucky General Assembly, Karam championed the passage of the Kentucky Education Reform Act, as we know, Kara, and led the efforts for the 4% school tax levied by school districts. This award is given in the spring of each year to state policymakers, education leaders, or citizens who have made notable state-level contributions to the improvement of Kentucky's public education system. Criteria for the award includes demonstrated leadership in policy development, passage or implementation resulted in increased educational opportunities for students, improved educational, post-secondary, or workforce outcomes for students, or increased capacity of teachers or school staff to better meet the academic, social, or emotional needs of Kentucky students. At this time, it is my honor to announce the winner of the 2024 Karam Award for Excellence in Education Policy, Dr. Denise Jamison. I would like to take, we can clap. I would like to take a few minutes to share about this educator's outstanding contributions in education policy. Dr. Jamison has demonstrated leadership skills in policy development over 20 years of teaching. These accompaniment, accomplishments include serving as a delegate for both the Warren Education Association and the Kentucky Education Association, traveling to Frankfurt for the quote, "Days of Learning," close quote, event to discuss impactful legislation with Senator Mike Wilson and Representative Kevin Jackson, receiving the quote, "Navy Influencer Impact Award" in December 2023 for helping students make informed career choices after graduation, developing criminology, law, and justice in popular culture in law classes, which became extremely popular among students of varying performance levels, founded the Students Against Destructive Decision-Making, SAD, club following the death of her son due to a drunk driver, aiming to educate students on the consequences of drunk driving, and establishing and coaching the first Warren County Mock Trial Team at Greenwood High School. Please join me in congratulations to Dr. Jamison. Right up to the table, Dr. Jamison, if you'd like to make a few statements or remarks.
I'd like a moment to take and thank everybody in Warren County. I'm lucky. I work at a great school, Greenwood High School. I remember you. I've been PD's with you before. But people don't understand, it's not just me helping the kids, the kids helped me. After my son was killed by a drunk driver, it was everything I could do to get out of bed. And those kids, they kept me getting up every morning. They, they, they reminded me constantly that I have a younger son and a husband, but those kids were the reasons I got up, got dressed, and went to school. Because what choice did I have? I couldn't let those kids down and everything. And so all the work I do at Greenwood in regard to helping the kids learn what consequences can do to their life and how destructive it can be, is just me trying to make sure that not one of you parents received the phone call I did. And I don't want the kids to take and fall into that trap. Because even though they're my school kids, they're still my kids. And so, yes, I do love my Warren County kids with all my heart, and I create a scholarship for my Warren County kids to go to school. So there's a scholarship at Western Kentucky University that Greenwood and Warren County students can get when they go to WKU. But no matter what, even when I retire, they're always going to be my kids. And that's what I'm trying to do, is take care of my kids.
Congratulations to you on, as the recipient of the award. On behalf of the Kentucky Board of Education and the Kentucky Department of Education, thank you for your exceptional leadership. And we do have a little award for you here. And I think Dr. Robinson's gonna join me, and we're gonna do a quick picture. Take. Oh, that's beautiful.
Isn't it pretty?
This was my son's favorite color, too.
Aww.
Extra special.
Yeah. I'm afraid I'll break it. Thank you.
Right here. Want to support your child? Right here?
Let me adjust this real quick, so I'm not asking. I guess you.
I do photography for a hobby.
That's why I kind of knew where he probably would want us.
Exactly.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And we look good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we go to the presentation of the Teresa Perry Compassion Award.
Thank you. And I invite Jennifer Ginn, our Chief Communications Officer, to the table, and she's gonna help me with this award.
Okay, is, is this on?
I think it is.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to, uh, join Interim Commissioner Kenny to announce the recipient of the 2024 Teresa Perry Compassion Award. The award was created in 2021 in memory of Teresa, who for 33 years worked tirelessly for the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Team KDE, our schools, our districts, and our children. Teresa served at KDE in the role of Executive Secretary to the Commissioner of Education. She provided outstanding customer service to internal and external audiences, and always exhibited compassion and provided positive inspiration toward others in day-to-day operations of the agency. The award is given annually to a KDE employee who exhibits the characteristics of professionalism that Teresa carried with her each day. The recipient should exhibit integrity and be committed to assisting others, focus on delivering excellent customer service for the agency, be knowledgeable and productive, and show compassion for others in the work that they do. So Commissioner, if you want to announce our recipient this year?
It is absolutely my pleasure to be able to announce, um, the award winner for the Teresa Perry Compassion Award. And really to commemorate Teresa's service to the Commonwealth of Kentucky. I want to acknowledge first Teresa's sister, Drew Hawkins. And Drew, can you stand up and say hello? And other family members that might be with you today. Okay. Well, we certainly are glad to have Drew. Drew is, um, one of the employees in our best office here at KDE. In the Office of Finance and Operations, and she exhibits a lot of the same qualities as her sister. Before I invite the recipient of this year's Teresa Perry Compassion Award forward, I, I do want to read a few excerpts about what her recommender had to say. This individual has been employed as a paraprofessional at the Kentucky School for the Blind for 16 years. She always comes to work with a smile and positive attitude, and no, is not in her vocabulary. Daily, this individual can be heard saying, "What can I do to help? And what can I do to make this a great day for our students?" Her compassion and integrity are evident in all that she does, and her dedication to providing personalized assistance ensures that all of the students she works with thrive and grow. In the ever-changing landscape of the day, she demonstrates incredible flexibility and adaptability, always putting the needs of the students first and foremost. She's willing to step in and assist wherever needed, ensuring that transitions are smooth for our students. She is a lifelong learner and is committed to her own professional development. She seeks out opportunities to increase her knowledge and skills. This dedication enriches not only the student's life, but also enriches the entire school community. She not only provides support in the classroom, but also serves as a coach for track and cheerleading. She dedicates countless hours outside of the academic day to ensure that students have a positive and fun experience in sports. She embodies the nomination criteria of integrity, commitment, excellent student, customer service, knowledge, productivity, and compassion. On behalf of the Kentucky Department of Education, I now proudly present Crystal Soule, an instruction, instructional assistant at the Kentucky School for the Blind, with the 2024 Teresa Perry Compassion Award. Do you want to come up to the table and say a few words?
Sorry, I'm extra emotional. I'm also pregnant, so. No, I just, I want to thank, um, our principal, Ms. Peggy Sinclair Morris, for those beautiful words. And, um, throughout the meeting, I kept looking at the picture to the left of, of the two young men. And I've known them since they started and graduated, and they're what it's all about. So, um, sorry, I'm so emotional, but.
You fit right in today.
But thank you all so much, and, um, it is my honor to try to carry on Teresa's memory. But yeah, it's all about the kids. And like Dr. Jamison, I think, said, I second that, that they, they are like my children. So, yeah, thank you.
If I remember correctly, um, you know, having the pleasure of attending the Kentucky School for the Blind graduation, they do a very moving ceremony. And she's a rose recipient. And the rose recipient is the, uh, really great tradition at the Kentucky School for the Blind that recognize those very important people in students' lives, and they select who gets the rose. And, um, I, I recognize Crystal from being a rose recipient on that night. So not only do your colleagues and coworkers recognize the important part that you play in students' life, the students themselves recognize what you have done for them. So I think that's really special.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, congratulations to our award winners, all very, very well-deserved award winners. Thank you, Board, for a very productive meeting, and the board would like to invite our award winners to join us for lunch immediately following adjournment. So, at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Their official acts, if you will. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Be quiet. The board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.